We've been open the regular meeting on Board of Selectmen on Monday, July 7th, 2025 at 6:02 PM. Stand for the pledge.
United States of America, each and every republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
Some payables and payroll for both FY 25 and FY 26. No motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve warrants WR 25-27 payables, WR 26-01 payables, PR 25-26 payroll, and withholding 25-26 withholdings.
Second.
Okay, second, any discussion?
No.
No. Hi.
Hi.
Next up is approved minutes. We don't have any this week, correct?
No.
Early, but public session is up next. Anybody here? Public session. Next up Conservation Commission, Lucy.
Yes, Conservation Commission that, and they're usual Tuesday nights. We had very active discussions on the best program that's being entertained for Coldbrook Road. And in order to do some more studying into it and figuring out what we need to do, what we need to look at, and wording of a lot of our paperwork, we would like to hire or have your permission to call Town Council or some council so that we get some assistance. We have a lot of information coming in. We just want to know how best to put it together and to present it to the EFSB Board.
We got an email at 4:20 this afternoon from Steve. So I'm writing on behalf of the Okam Conservation Commission. I am the current chairman of the commission. I would like your permission to utilize a legal counsel that the town has retained for the best project. We help rescind the order of resource delineation. You want to rescind that order?
We would like to, but again, I need Town Council or DEP to help how to rescind something.
We believe the ORAD was approved based on inaccurate information in the abbreviated notice of resource delineation area. What was inaccurate?
They forgot half of it. It wasn't on the application.
To you?
Mm-hmm.
Or about Boston's. Is it on there? So they left it completely?
They left it completely off as far as we know. I didn't exactly see what they presented to Boston. I did not visually see it. I am assuming that they, never assume, I know that, but that they actually presented the same as to what they presented to us. So I think they need to present to us, number one, they were told if they were ever going to work down there, they needed a notice of intent. We never received one. Instead, this just got all put forward to people in Boston.
What work have they done?
They haven't done any. But the case was when they do start to work near any of the wetland, that particular one, that they would be filing a notice of intent.
But they haven't started working, so they don't have to file?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Guys, thank you.
But I would think when the rest of their information is finally included in everything, that that would be a step that they would need to take.
So Conservation, you're not sure, Lucy, what they've actually presented to Boston?
No.
Okay. I think the only thing I want to kind of throw in there is, I think we're at a point where the Board of Selectmen, the Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board need to have a group meeting with Town Council to discuss strategy and litigation so that everybody's on the same page as to what everybody else is doing within town government.
Our question is because, and we're not sure. I mean, we haven't specifically dealt with KP other than other boards that have been on, but not Conservation. I don't know if they have somebody that is into dealing with the best programs or if they don't. I know there are people out there. I know I can find names of people that have done this and have gone before those boards in Boston to help us out. We would have to contact them, and I do not know how much they would charge. But we need to get some paperwork together that sounds very legalized.
Well, what you need to do is break down what your questions are for council. The Planning Board's going to do the same thing, and we're going to do the same thing. And then we meet with council.
Planning Board and Conservation have a lot of the same questions. I'm sure they have a couple of extras.
Okay.
But we kind of have tied up with some of the same questions.
Okay.
I've been working them out specifically what I have heard people asking that we don't know the answers to, and specifically questions that I have.
Yep.
And that the board has. So that we don't have to waste a lawyer's time.
That's what I was going to say.
I would like to present everything that we can get together and have time and say, put this so it sounds like, you know, you know, is going on.
And I also don't want three boards going on the same topic back and forth with council. Ching, ching, you know? So, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, well, just from the standpoint, I think we should all, we should all meet with KP and kind of bat a lot of this around to make sure there isn't duplication, to make sure there isn't, so that everybody's kind of on the same path and that everybody understands what information is public, what information would be held by council is proprietary. You know, or when, you know, if there's some type of, you know, council goes to the
EFSP.
EFSP. You know, with our response. So those types of things, so everybody's on the same page.
Right.
So.
But you feel secure that KP can handle, or that they have somebody in a specific department that can handle? Because otherwise, I know two of the commissioners said that they would contact DEP, see if they have a lawyer, and contact MACC to see if there's
The DEP is not going to help us. Their attorneys are not going to help us.
No, I don't think they will.
No.
But MACC usually has an attorney available, and they don't usually charge for
We've been going through Attorney, Attorney Pucci, K and P. So that's who we'll use.
And you did say that if there was an expertise they needed, they would bring in special counsel?
They can bring in counsel, yeah. Yeah.
But they will have everything written up and a detailed summary of what needs to be said and what we need to present to the board in Boston.
To get some dates.
I was going to say, we want to set a date, get everybody together.
We're going to have to do it, I think, fairly quickly. I'm not exactly sure when our hearing is
It's not scheduled, do you like to check today?
To when?
It's not scheduled. I checked today.
Last I heard was sometime in August, but August is only a half a month away.
Right.
So I, I feel a little pressured, but like I said, I'm getting our ideas together.
When's your next meeting, Lucy?
Our next meeting is the first Tuesday of the month, every month. I think it's something like August 6th.
August 6th. So are you going to have a meeting before then?
I would like to.
So if you do that and put together your outline, we'll let Planning Board know to do the same. I don't know when their meeting is, whether it's this week or next week.
They've got their ideas pretty well
Right.
meshed together.
Yeah.
We just have a couple of things to insert so that
Well, if you can do that, then we'll you're thinking July or December, Tom?
In July, yeah.
Sooner than?
Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as we can arrange it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're going to talk to a lawyer, are you going to have, like, everybody on that call to the lawyer?
No, I'd like to have a meeting here and have them come. I think that would be more productive than doing the telephone thing.
I just want to make sure we have the correct number of people at a time.
Well, you'd need a quorum for each group.
Yeah.
Are we, we're not meeting next week, or are we?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
I believe we're probably going to meet Monday or
May have to.
Because we have
That's fine.
We have some
I know this is the time of year you go back to doing every other week. But with this proposition coming out
Oh, yeah, no.
I have no problem.
The time also.
I know, absolutely.
All right, so I don't know. You guys want to get together, would you have questions open? Contact the Planning Board.
Can you?
Them on board and
Can you do a meeting this week, Lucy? And get everybody together?
Any night. If you want a day meeting, usually Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays.
Well, I mean, just, just with Conservation to get your paperwork.
I will call them together, see who's available.
Why don't you do that? And we'll give Planning Board a call, the chairman tomorrow. Let him get his stuff together and schedule a airhold group.
Okay.
And then we'll call Town Council in the morning to set up an appointment.
Set up the appointment.
Do you want to do a day or an evening appointment?
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, I'm just thinking some of the members of Conservation are
Up job.
Not for Conservation, since they work during the day. Evenings are better for them. They've been able to make our six o'clock meetings pretty well.
Oh, evening meeting?
Yeah.
I would say it would have to be an evening.
Sounds good, Lucy.
And in the same vein, if I could just quickly say that we received an application for a volunteer for our boards to make it a complete Conservation Commission of five members. I would like to introduce him to you tonight. He has come before our board. They have voted that they would like to present him to you for appointment at the proper time. His name is Nicholas Kinlick, and he's sitting right over here.
Hi, Nick.
He has been taking classes. And he's also done some training exercises as well, so he has a good idea of what, what lands are.
Good. Good, excellent.
And what the wetland laws are. So he's been getting a little ahead of the position, which is a good thing. If you'd like to see his application, we have it here.
Yeah. Give it to Maribel.
Okay.
With the song for the next meeting appointment.
That would be the 14th.
No, the 21st is the next regular one.
14th, yeah.
You want it? Oh, okay.
It's going to be better.
No.
That's next, next Monday.
It's Monday.
I know it's on a order, but
Is it going to be under your agenda?
Monday.
Yeah, we'll ask them.
So it will come under your
Yeah, it'll come under appointments.
Yeah. I know it's jumping ahead of
You all have to be here for that. We're just formally appointing you. That's, that's all.
Yeah.
Or what cleanup we have for the FY 25 bills?
Yeah, if the chairman wants to take it out of order, I'll be happy to update.
Yeah, that's what I said. We're going to get to the thing that we got to do Monday anyway, so we can add that to it.
Okay, yes, there were a few items with the end of the year. There's always a few hurdles to get through, so there were a few invoices from a couple of different departments that need to have line item transfers slash encumbrances. I did send the Board of Selectmen and FinCon members an email today letting them know. And that will require a meeting from both Selectmen and FinCon members. I was thinking maybe a joint meeting is just to approve any of the transfers and for, for the accountant to be able to encumber some. They do need to be completed by July 15th is the deadline for that. So those, there was probably like four or five invoices that were kicked back, unfortunately, because there wasn't enough funds. I'll give you an example. Board of Selectmen was short $20 to pay the telephone bill for Verizon. So that was one of ours in our office, and then the big one is Town Council. That one was shy. We got an invoice right before the warrant was due for over almost $3,500, and we, there was only maybe like 900 left in there. So that does need a line item transfer, about maybe like 2,500 or so, give or take. I will look around, and I did say this in my email within the Board of Selectmen's budget, to see if there's anywhere that can be pulled. But if there isn't, just a heads up, I would request for it to be a finance reserve transfer. But I'll, I'll poke around and see.
So if we do that Monday, we'll be okay?
Mm-hmm. If Finance Committee comes to the meeting.
It has to be, they have to. Yeah.
They will
It has to be approved by both.
Yeah, right. Get ahold of them and see if they can comment.
I sent an email today, so hopefully
Did he? You know it? I know you're not the chairman.
No, and, and, you know, certainly we, I'm sure we'd be willing to meet. I can't make any comments
Right.
with FinCon.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you can get ahold of them in case they don't respond to us.
Okay. I'll check with Cory.
Okay. Just tell them to get ahold of Maribel. Thanks.
That should clean everything up. The other question, you weren't sure on council attending town meeting, is that part of their?
We have one free.
That's usually free.
One free
Town meeting.
Appearance a year.
They think they billed, right?
So I'll double check that before
That it's a freebie.
Before Monday, and if it's reduced, then that would be great. I mean, you still need a line item transfer, but it'll be last, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All set?
All set?
Okay.
Yep.
A question on this Seasonal 325 East Road East. Is the joint committee and Board of Selectmen meeting open?
Which one now? The one about
The one where all the commissions, the commissioners from Conservation
Yep. Might be executive session because it's litigation. Usually it is. So.
Part of the discussion would be possible litigation going forward in the discussion.
Be getting everyone on the same page as to what should be done about the Conservation Commission's order that was recorded at the Registry of Deeds in Worcester and submitted along with Murega's application.
Isn't that all part of our strategy to fight the best?
I think it is a correction of, of an order that was issued based upon Murega's inaccurate submission.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think you're in litigation yet. I think you're at the point where you are correcting the record.
As far as they're concerned. Planning Board is something different. Well, the Planning Board is something different.
No, it's the Conservation Commission.
No, this Land Board and them all have questions for council on different angles on the same topic. That's why we wanted to get together with council sitting here.
Okay, so you're going to make it an executive session then?
Probably, yeah. Unless council says we can do it in the open. We'll know that well ahead of time.
Okay. So if it is okay with whichever council you're going to be using, if it's okay to be open, then it will be on the agenda but not listed in the executive session?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, next up, Pat Superintendent Highway.
Well, just the awards for our seasonal bids. We have eight bidders for our seasonal bids, which was listed under materials to be used for FY 26. This was estimated rough materials that would be possibly used for during FY 26 for seasonal bids. That covered basically all of our, even for sand for the wintertime, also covered all the materials that would possibly be used for road construction throughout the year. I do have plan for two, possibly three roads. It's all going to depend, unfortunately. I just got an email from Isabel, our district rep from Mass DOT, and nothing has been, her direct words were, nothing has been allotted or approved for FY 26 for Chapter 90 money. I have a feeling they're waiting on that. Whether we're going to get that double Chapter 90 money or not. So I think they're just waiting it out a little bit, which will then determine how much I can get done.
Yep.
But for, so you know, my, my general plans right now are the beginning of Berry Road off of Coldbrook, which is like, we call it Little Berry. It's that shortcut off from Coldbrook to blinking out.
Top of Maple Street.
Top of Maple Street, thank you. And then it's been brought to my attention about Wear Corner, just right here in front of the Town Hall. We do have some serious drainage issues that I'd like to get addressed. Definitely some barn work that needs to be done. I don't think it'll be a full reclamation like Berry will be. It might just be a mill off on a, on a basement. Catch basin adjustment. Also, probably reworking the library parking lot is something that we might be working into. Not really essentially the parking lot itself, but the entrance way. It's kind of got like this weird triangle bump out thing. Well, everybody drives over it anyways. We've tried putting up a hand berm there to divert the water to go onto the road so we can go down and drain to the basins. But with people running over the lawn and the berm and everything, it's going behind the berm and now going into the fields, creating washout issues. So that whole triangle thing bump out in the parking lot will probably be eliminated and be a straight shot. The entrance way will probably be the maximum 24 feet, which is still in regulations with driveway permits, so we'll be fine there. But then it'll allow me to take the berm from the parking lot and wrap it into the road so I can get that water away from the fields and keep it on the road, because there's plenty of drainage further down the road that the water can take, so.
And that's not the library land, it's town common land?
Town common land. It's just the library parking lot area, I figured, but and then there's the basins by the Verizon building and stuff. It's just, it's all washed out over there. It's been a problem for a while, so we can get that all cleaned up, and then that'll actually fix that washout issue by the Town Hall driveway entranceway. My plan would actually be to redo the driveway entranceway and possibly put berm on both sides, and it'll be widened a little bit. But I can at least divert the water to where it needs to properly go. It's not going on the lawn. It's not, it'll stay in the road. I can make paved swales to the basins that are off the road, so I can make sure the water's going where it needs to go. Just the natural drainage here, just from over the years, there's so much washout and erosion. I know there's a perimeter drain pipe that runs down on the front lawn. We'll make sure that's cleared and ready to go. The culvert that goes under the Verizon driveway needs to be cleaned out, because that's where that perimeter drain goes, so that'll all be taken care of. But it'll essentially clean up the center of town since Maple Street and everything was done, so that's kind of my plan. It's just those two roads, but it'll all depend on. I've already been quoted for them prior to the seasonal bid, so I had a rough idea, but again, it'll, it'll all depend on what they're going to give us.
Very good, Louis.
Yep, that's your copy. I do have the awarding letter that here, Bill. Nice enough to do, and then those are all the ones that'll be mailed out to the bidders.
When the board votes, you guys can sign it, and I'll make copies to send with all the bid packets.
I'll make a motion if you guys are ready.
Yeah.
Yep. Do I make this motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Dear bidder, bidders, thank you for submitting a bid to the town for our highway seasonal bid request of June 26, 2025. The Board of Selectmen voted at the regular meeting on July 7th, 2025, to award bids as recommended by our highway superintendent. The attached spreadsheet details bidders' amounts and awards. You may contact our highway superintendent, Patrick Matt Erosian, at highway@okammass.gov or at 508-82556 with any questions.
Second motion.
It's been made and seconded. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you. I attached all my business cards, those summary bids and packets, and I'll give the envelopes for all the bidders that did submit a bid. I'll give them a Marybell, and we'll make sure that they all get out to the bidders. And then if they have a way or need to contact me, all the companies, some of the companies, the project managers, been changing hands kind of frequently, so just want to make sure they're able to get in touch with me.
That was good. Anything else on the highway?
Uh, nothing too crazy. We have been using our new machine now that's been registered and insured. We've been doing just around the center of town before the fourth, and they've been actually starting up slowly work their way out with the new machine, with the long addition arm. We've been able to kind of trim back a lot further. There is some areas that we'll have to be talking to some homeowners about cutting them back, because the trees are on town property, and they, they lean into the road pretty, you know, quite frequently, especially during wintertime, and the snow's on them. They're hitting against the side of the trucks and everything, so there will be some homeowners we'll be talking to about definitely trimming them back. It does clean up the road quite a bit. It's actually making quite a bit of difference. As much sunlight as we can get on the roads, it's better off. We're going to be in the wintertime, so and then we won't have to worry about oversized vehicles or anything else that are going to have any issues. Other than that, we've been just cleaning up the garage and law enforcement, trying to stay ahead of the game.
Um, just for the boards and poll, Mass DOT Bridge inspectors will be out in August.
Yes.
For
Robinson Road. Yep, we have our bridge inspection for Robinson Road in August. I can confirm the date. It's rather the 18th and the 20th, but they will be out inspecting this year. I have looked. I mean, in my opinion, it's not the greatest. They let it go last year and passed it. On what they may make us do this year, I'm not too sure. From opinions I've gotten from other people, there is a possibility that there may be some Jersey barriers set, and it'll be closed. I planned the Mass DOT grant for the small bridge program opens in December, so if it fails in August, then we're going to have a short timeframe from August to December until I can apply for that grant. But then that project in itself is going to be over a year, because they allot for an engineer to come in, do a full engineer for the bridge, covers up to a certain amount, and then, you know, I'm sure it's from that year on they're working on it. So it may be a little bit until it reopen, but we're just going to keep our fingers crossed that we can keep it open, and I'll still apply for the grant, knowing that it needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you. Don, you want me to leave these by the office or do you want? These are just the things they sent in in the end.
On my desk.
Yeah.
Like on the side desk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can add this to it, Pat?
Thank you.
Hey, Pat. Pat.
Yes.
Hang around, cause
Oh, yeah. All right, I will.
If town clerk before you go.
Yeah, I'll just put these in here.
Next up, we have fiscal year twenty six additional appointments.
Those are just two updated ones for the records officers. We still had the former superintendent listed and then the board did the town clerk as a records officer for that office, but this is for the assistant to also be a records officer.
Yeah, right. So I'll make a motion, Karen Harper, a one-year records officer for the town clerk's office. And Patrick Matt Erosion, a one-year records officer for the highway department.
Second.
Favor.
Bye.
Bye. All set, Pat?
You can see the town clerk.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Night, Karen.
And next up is the Board of Health Appointment Recommendation.
The former clerk of the Board of Health was going to or expressed interest in taking the third seat for the Board of Health once the clerk position was ended. And I received an email from one of the members of the Board of Health stating that she would be. And unfortunately, on last, late last week or mid, midweek, Sue Collette sent an email stating that she is not interested and will not be accepting or taking the third seat.
Okay.
So they still have a vacancy.
Email and she's not taking the job? Motion would be made. Accept her.
Just to accept it all, so refusal of the position?
Yeah. Make a motion that we accept the letter or email from Sue Collette stating that she's not interested in the position on the Board of Health.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. All right, next up Forbes Library Job Description.
Lauren, the library director, had sent over an email with adding additional responsibilities to one of her current employees, Sharon Corey, who is the, the fifth librarian? Director? Is she that? No, is it Heidi?
Heidi is, yes, yes.
Okay, so I always look up her emails by name and it's library. It's an updated job description for Sharon Corey. Or library assistant, children's the, the position would be children's program associate from library. Library, so it's just adding according to Lauren's email, adding some additional responsibilities to her current role. The position would entail a bit of an increase, not a whole lot, which is funded in the budget, so it wouldn't make a difference in the overall budget for the staff.
And she gave you the updated job description, right?
Correct.
So we're gonna add that to the manual.
Right.
And we're gonna move the pay from sixteen sixty-two to eighteen dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And that's covered by their budget.
Correct.
So?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we have a motion. Sharon.
Corey. Yep.
S H A R. Make a motion to
I think, I think it wouldn't be so much for the person, just the position.
Position, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, to add the position of
Children's.
Children's Program Associate for the Folks Memorial Library. And pay rate's gonna go from sixteen sixty-two to eighteen ten or eighteen even, okay? And that should be it.
Yep.
Yeah. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Up Fire Chief Tim Howe, salary vote. Do you have his email?
I have. You want me to pull it up briefly, can we do?
Yeah.
Right here.
I just really need the paragraph where he's
That's the
So this was Fire Chief's letter to the board. It says, I want to start off by thanking the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee for the work in putting together the FY twenty six budget. I know this was a tough year and the next year's budget is going to be worse. As chief, I have always had the full support of the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. This year was the same. Last night I received the FY twenty six pay rates for myself and the department staff. When looking at the number, I see all members receive two percent a two percent raise this year. As chief, I receive just under four percent. As chief, I cannot accept more than the men and women that serve this town. They are, they are the ones who are going out late at night. Leaving their family events and missing their children's events to serve strangers in need. Without the members of this department, I would not be able to function as chief as they are the backbone of this department. I am respectfully asking my pay only be increased the same as the members and the rest of the funds go towards the firefighter's wage account. I have CC'd Laurie, town accountant. So she can adjust the numbers before the start of the fiscal year. So that will be a motion to accept his recommendation as far as his pay and the only question I have is can we put the balance in?
We could go with his recommendation, but we can't move the line item out
Right.
until May. Or at a special town meeting, we can adjust. There's an article, but it's the only way to do it now. It's already, already in.
Yeah, the accountant's response was that all the remaining funds will stay in the fire department wages account.
So we can readdress it at a special town meeting going forward or?
Is this a separate line item?
Yes.
This is, yeah.
He's salary.
Okay, I mean, we can't reduce it tonight.
No. We can accept
We can accept his
His recommendation, so he will be paid at the lower rate.
Yeah, cause that's what he wants.
Well, it's like that, I reduce.
Yeah.
Him, yeah. Yeah. We just can't change that line item.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Okay, so that's your motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
And we'll just make a note that come May or a special town meeting, we'll move the balance into God knows they're probably gonna need it, so.
Yeah.
And next up, we have the Central Regional Emergency Communications Center update.
Yeah, so on July first, everyone received or anybody who's registered to receive the calls, emails, or texts for those automated updates, received one stating that effective July first, Rutland Regional Dispatch has officially changed to the Central Regional Emergency Communications Center. Again, the service remains the same. It's just a name in the a name change and it's going from being directly under Rutland to a district model, which all towns now have a vote for everything. And it still stays or remains with the same five original towns, Rutland, OCAM, Warren, Berry, and Hubbardston. Additional towns are being seeked and approached or they're showing interest to join in the district. The more towns join, the better the chances of the assessment yearly to be less or reduced. Granted, it depends too. It's, it's like a double edged sword. You know, the more towns are in the district, the more staff you're gonna need. So you, you know, it can, it can kind of pan off, but I think overall it will be successful. Director Moriarty sent an email stating that the, on June twenty third, he attended the Spencer's Board of Selectment meeting. The board unanimously voted to join Central Mass Regional. So Spencer is the first of five towns that the board had voted. The rest of the remaining four towns will be meeting in the month of July. And he'll keep us updated as to what the outcomes are. Those additional towns are let's see, Sturbridge, Southbridge, Auburn, and Charlton. Sutton is one of the towns that's showing interest. The former town administrator of Rutland is now the town manager in Sutton, so that you know, sounds like it could move in, in the right direction as Austin was the, the initial person who started this process in Rutland, so that's
Mike didn't say when they were gonna schedule a vote on Spencer, did he?
No, they already did. Spencer voted on June twenty
Spencer voted, but to be accepted at the regional.
I, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
The district does. So the, the current five towns have a meeting tomorrow. So that's the update on that. Mike also informed us that they received a grant. They says, thank you very much for applying for, to participate in the fiscal twenty six state nine one one department regional public safety answer and point and regional secondary public safety answer and point. Funding for the development grant program is competitive and is awarded on the basis of grant guidelines. The Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the State of nine one one Department is very pleased to inform the town of Rutland that they have been awarded a grant for Rutland Regional Communication Center, which is now the new name, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Yep, he stated that this will be used to let's see, we have received there, to replace the T, the Tac One repeat channel, which has been out of service for some time since we've replaced the main channel infrastructure in fiscal twenty-five. So bringing up all the radios or as much as we can up to date, so every, Mike is constantly looking for grants and, and so that's a, a good one to have received. So, yeah, and then the meeting will be, like I said, will be tomorrow and I'll update the board on anything from there.
All right, very good. The money that Don Berthel is seeking from the legislature for us for this building.
Mm-hmm.
We approved for twenty-five thousand.
Kind of short, huh?
Yeah.
It's something, huh?
So it's better than nothing, but that was in the, in the bill the book governor just signed, so.
That was for the feasibility study.
Feasibility study, yeah. The fire department is in the last go around of the grants that he applied for. And one of them was eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for radio equipment. The police and fire and highway. And I believe there was another fifty or sixty thousand for equipment. Turnout gear.
Yeah.
Turnout gear, yeah.
That's a separate grant and he should know by September. We're in the finals, so.
That was a federal one.
Federal, federal grant, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Don, I think that the numbers are a little off. We have one out, one out for four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep.
For new radios and one for eighty thousand for turnout gear.
No business with the board. I got an email from Sharon today. She is reaching out to them.
So, when you board and all that?
I just got it today, so I haven't, I haven't forwarded it yet, but I will.
Okay.
Any correspondence?
Yeah. I have an email letter from Chief Tim Howe, OCAM Fire Department. Your permission, I'll read it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dear OCAM Board of Selectmen, on July third, town of Rutland requested OCAM Fire to provide mutual aid support for the annual fireworks display. This yearly event draws almost ten thousand people into the center of town and causes unique challenges. This year was no different. The night started off with OCAM's UTV. What's a UTV?
Gulf Cop looking thing.
Okay. Responding through crowds to support the police with lost children, sick individuals in a fight. Just before the fireworks began, the OCAM engine was tasked to respond to a barricaded gunman along with Rutland EMS. From there, with the UTV, it responded to a car that just missed a crowd and struck seven parked cars. While clearing that call, they then responded to a motorcycle versus pedestrian. Due to traffic, the UTV responded and began medical care while the engine fought its way through traffic. Members provided care until Paxton ambulance arrived. Being in the fire service for thirty years and dealing with city traffic, this was some of the most challenging driving conditions I have ever seen a fire apparatus deal with. The teamwork, the teamwork of all the members, their emergency response skills and professionalism should be recognized. And I'm honored to work with them. July third staffing, Captain Jake Nakla, firefighter Tom Magliaro, firefighter Sean Roden, firefighter Dom Giannetta, is that right? And firefighter Cameron Howe.
And I
Respectfully Timothy Howe, Fire Chief, OCAM.
And I just want to add that Tim, Fire Chief Tim Howe was also present at
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So.
Sounds like quite a night.
Yes.
Well, nothing happens in the towns anyway, so. Well. That's a very good job.
Yeah, so that's a well done. Yeah, so that's a well done.
Excellent job.
The OCAM Fire Department.
Mm-hmm.
We should, uh. Make note in the files.
Yes.
Yeah, with a letter of appreciation.
Yeah.
To each member.
Yep.
Including the chief. Give this back to you, so you have a, a copy.
And to adjourn if we have nothing else.
Over on Monday, six P M.
Yeah.
And with finance committee. Hopefully. Okay.
Do we wanna? Find out from them and if they can't do Monday, they can do earlier, cause you said it's gonna be done by fifteen.
Right, the earliest I think that could happen would be at this point, if we post agenda tomorrow, it'd be Thursday.
Right.
Right.
So I had said in my email, Thursday would be. Good, I will reach out to Corey. As well, um, or anyone. To just see if, who, if that can be done Thursday or Monday.
Yeah.
Just to have two options.
We'll leave it open until. She knows and then we'll just post the agenda for.
Yeah.
Whichever date it is.
Right.
Uh, to get it done.
Yeah.
So, uh, motion to adjourn then.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.